Executive session. The next item on the agenda is Finance and Facilities Committee Report. Turn it over to Chair Caswell.
All right, I think the first item we have is left is a brief presentation on our revenue expense report. And I'll turn it over to Adam for that.
Good evening. First, before I get into this, I do want to introduce Russell Tompkins. Oh, come on. All right, that'll wait.
We put the coin up here.
Huh? All right. Education report. So, I'm going to run through this quickly. It's not a whole lot of information here. This is the first quarter ending November 30th. So roughly three months' worth of the budget. You can see here on the revenue stream, the fall tuition, it's about 9.5% above what was projected for the fall. That is due to our actual fall enrollment higher than what was projected. The winter enrollment, we're looking probably roughly around $60,000 under, just slightly lower than what was expected. For the spring tuition, we also expect this to be above budget. Right now, we're trending, I think, about 9% above where spring projections were at. That will change slightly as we get through the first couple of weeks of semester, but we expect that to be fairly along the same lines of fall. College and high school is also running higher than expected. This number here represents fall only. We will not see that much of an increase or the same revenue for the spring because a lot of the courses are paid yearly. So the only new fees that'll come in for the spring are those that are just for that spring semester. So it will be probably above budget, but not double what we see there for the fall numbers. Looking down into the local share portion, we haven't received anything from the sponsor yet, but that's typical. Chargeback revenue is a little bit lower than expected, but that can be somewhat related to the non-resident tuition, which is about 29% higher. If this number is higher, it tends to be a result of chargeback revenue being lower. What happened here is a lot of students who are not residents of Duchess County do not do their certificate of residency, so they get charged the out-of-state or non-resident tuition. And because of that, we don't know what county they're actually from, so we don't charge the other counties for that revenue stream. So that's why those numbers are a little bit off balance. Going into the other revenues, the other fees is up a little bit higher than expected, mostly due to interest income. And then, of course, fees and other credit fee revenues are both just a little bit higher than expected, but overall, we're looking at about 36% there, total operating revenue, which is typical of where we're at with the first quarter because most of the fall revenue for tuition is all towards the beginning of the semester. That'll level out as we're only about 25% into the year with this report, as we get into further into the year. We look at the expenditure side, and they are pretty much where we expected them to be. They're all running about 22%, 23%. The second page here is a little bit more details on that. From the personnel side, we're looking at about 23% of expenses year-to-date versus 25% of the budget. And this kind of relates to the vacancies that we have. We typically run less than what's budgeted just because of the rolling vacancies we have throughout the college. Fringe benefits, same thing, trending right along the same lines, about 23%. The equipment line there, 25% of the budget, which is pretty much on target where we're at. And all these contractual obligations here, broken out by category, overall, we're about 22% of those. There are a couple that are running higher than expected, dues and subscription, food services. But that is, as we get more into normal operating mode, I guess, coming out of pandemic, we're just kind of coming back to what we typically would see. I think when we go into the next budget cycle, we'll look at, you know, all those numbers again to make sure that we're capturing the right expense lines or budget lines. But overall, our expenses are trending at about 22.8%, which is right on target where we expected to be. So overall, this report, not a lot of surprises. The good news is that our revenue is trending above what was budgeted, and that is going to look good for us towards the end of the fiscal year when we come closer to the end of the academic year. Any questions?
No, see any?
Thank you.
You can stay up there, Adam. The next item on the agenda is an educational presentation. We're going to get an update on the Academic and Facilities Master Planning from Dr. Houston, as well as Vice President Rathbun.
All right, so my portion will be fairly brief because we've been discussing this many times, many different venues. And so this really is just kind of a highlight to catch up where we're at and kind of where we stand with some of the current projects we have running. So if you recall during the master plan, we've kind of took an assessment of where all the condition of all our buildings. This is where they fell within, and the focus for the master plan was kind of a core central of the campus around the north end, and really not focusing too much on the lower half, the Falcon, Hudson, and Teconic, although we will be focusing on Hudson for swing space as we get into some of these other renovations. I'll go through that in a second. And then, this is just kind of to capture how we're focusing the master plan on. So the north end of the campus there, CBI, Duchess Hall, Drumlin, and then Washington, that's the core of the focus, with some other work being done in Bone Hall and SSP. The short term is addressing urgent deferred maintenance, since some of those projects we have in the books now. And then renovate Duchess and Drumlin Hall to create a new campus center. Immediate term, years six through 10, is programmatic upgrades, is CBI going in Washington, and then, oh, that still says renovate Duchess and Drumlin, that should say renovate CBI. I'll have to correct that one. And then, long term, beyond the 10 years, is to focus on Falcon and Teconic and Hudson Hall as we move forward with this. So in the actual master plan, this is how the projects are broken down from a full cost estimate. And so the short term there, years one through five, is focusing on those firsts there. Not numbered correctly. The second, the intermediate term, or year six through 10, are those, the items in there in the out-years. Now, when we went to the Board of Trustees here to approve our five-year capital plan, as well as what we submitted to the county and state, this is how it's going to look like. There is a slight change from what I'm proposing here to what was submitted last year, and I'll go through that in a second. But these firsts for the 2024, these are all the projects that were currently approved by the county last month, and has also been included in the state budget for 2024 to be approved hopefully in April. So FFNE, the campus site repairs, CBI roof replacement, sports field, ADA, Hudson Hall, and DCC FISCHKA modifications, those are all project dollars that we have in the state budget at this time. Three, four of these, three of these, we're moving on RFPs right now. So campus site repairs and upgrades, phase three. We had a meeting today to discuss what that project is going to entail, and it's going to focus on crosswalks coming across Creek Road, some entrance ways around Hudson Hall, some stairs that are deteriorating. So really kind of focusing on areas that need improvements on the exterior of the campus, walkways, stairways, parking lots. To go along with that, ADA upgrades. We looked at improving campus sites that are in violation of ADA requirements. One of the things that we're working on is how do we get individuals from Falcon Hall to the main part of campus? Right now, there really is no easy way for anybody, really, to get from those locations. So we're looking at ways to create a ramp that would go from the second-floor exit of Falcon and then across the road up here to CBI. So that's going to be one of the primary focuses of that. The other one, the CBI rooftop replacement, we're working on doing a design for that in conjunction with two projects that we already have funds for, which is the Hudson Hall boilers, as well as the piping between Hudson Hall and Drumlin and Washington Hall. We're going to have design fees for both, for all three of those projects into one so that we can make sure that they're all saving money from the design phases on that so we can focus these Hudson Hall interior reconfiguration costs on actual project costs, not the design costs. In the out-years is where things change a little bit. So a couple of weeks ago, I had a talk with the county on how best to approach our capital projects here from a funding standpoint. When we went to the county for a lot of these projects, there was a lot of talk and concern about underestimating, and a lot of our projects are based on just estimates from the master plan. So what I did in the out-years was, well, I worked with Tony first, wanted to break out design costs from the projects that were listed on the previous page. So now I have design costs, and I also have the project and construction costs separately. So what I'm doing now is I'm proposing that in years 25 and out, we go for design costs first, get that design, get really good, hard numbers for a construction cost, and then in the following year, request the full funding for that project. So that's kind of here. So this first one here, the one that changes is number three, Duchess Drumlin. Last year, what we had gone as approved in this project was about $16 million. This 3.2 is the actual design cost of that project. So it's roughly nine, nine or 10% of the actual overall project costs associated with that. These other ones here, FFNE is an annual request, the Hudson Hall interior reconfiguration, phase two, it's a follow-on from the previous, this current fiscal year, phase one, and then some repairs in the President's House is required. As we get into 2026, here you'll see Duchess Drumlin renovation. That's the full cost of the project estimate at this point. That number will be revised once we get the actual cost to it. So 62.5 million, it's a large number, but we need to do big things with this campus. FFNE, again, just a standard request. Now, in '27 and '28, did the same thing with CBI. We did have CBI broken up into two larger chunks. Here, it's just CBI for '27 is just under $2 million for the design cost, and then in '28, we'll be asking for the full construction cost, which is about $41 million. Again, that's just an estimate that will change. But that's how I'm proposing to realign the capital projects and be able to go in with a stronger story and better supporting documentation, not just to the Board of Trustees here, but also to the county and to the state moving forward. And so, and I already touched upon some RFPs we're doing. Another, a couple of other ones that we're getting underway, that we already have funding for, is the Duchess elevator, and this was approved over a year ago for a project funding for that. It's a $2 million project. It is going to go in conjunction with Duchess Drumlin renovation costs, but we really understand where the elevator is going to go, and we already have the funding, so we're just going to move ahead and get that rolling. And then, we talked about Hudson Hall feasibility study. We have that funding, it's $250,000. What we're going to use that funding for is to assess the space in Hudson Hall and how we can accommodate that space for swing space for Duchess and Drumlin when that gets renovated. Primarily, we're talking about dining services. How are we going to fit dining services into this campus when that facility is under full renovation? So this funding will be used to do that assessment and to work with departments of what their needs are and utilizing the funding in these, these two, number six and number three, number two there, to really do the construction side of that to accommodate those spaces. And then I talked about the Hudson Hall design. We have 1.4 million for design, that'll be going for the boilers, the piping, and hot water heater in Duchess and Drumlin. And again, two of those projects, the piping and the hot water heater are funded, the boilers are in the '24 budget that is currently in the state budget. So that's currently where we stand. Any questions on capital projects?
Just a comment real quickly. In my earlier years here, when we did these capital project requests, they were really just reacting to problems. In other words, we have a leak here, we have a staircase that's falling apart. So this was, as part of the master plan, it was sort of an idea that take a comprehensive look at buildings and see what you really need to kind of bring them up into the modern era, I'll call it, you know, more energy efficient, and what the needs are in terms of space and size for teaching students these days, classrooms, et cetera. So this is really, in other words, the numbers kind of look shockingly big at times, but it's because it's based on a realistic inventory of what needs to be done. So they're requests, as we say, and we're not always sure they'll all be funded, but this is what it's going to take. Basically.
All right, good evening, everybody. So connected to that is how can we make decisions as to what makes sense here at the campus? In other words, what projects should we move forward with? And so, one conceptual way that we can do that is through Centers of Excellence. And so, as we say what they're currently proposed as, you think of them as similar to academies or schools, and they're really focusing on programs and partnerships. Those are the two things that I really want everyone to keep in their mind as far as when we're talking about what is the Center of Excellence. We're really looking at how our programs align and collected with each other, and then what are the partnerships that we can form in order to support those programs? I cannot stress this enough, and I think I was a broken record at Comic-Con on Thursday, that this is a work-in-progress concept. My partner's a baker, and so I say, we have the ingredients on the table, and that's as far as we, that's where we're at. We're trying to figure out how to put those ingredients together to put them into the oven. So we're still making a lot of decisions. There's still a lot of room for brainstorming. We're talking to various constituencies on the campus, Board of Trustees, talking with various faculty groups, departments, and really, we could talk about changing of the centers or the Centers of Excellence. We may have to change the concept altogether. This is not being implemented tomorrow or even in the next, in this academic year. We have time to figure this out because there's a lot of things that have to happen before we could fully implement something like this. For example, even if we were to walk out of here tonight and say, hey, we like this concept, well, there's a lot of things like about how does shared governance work under this new concept? How do academic departments work under this concept? How do we support these various centers? So there's a lot of things that we would have to come to terms with before we could implement this fully. So how can this be beneficial? So really, this leads from the work that the college has already done in guided pathways. And so just as a reminder for folks, it's clarifying the path, helping students stay, get on the path, stay on the path, and then ensure that students are learning. So really, this is just, it's an evolution, or it's one way that we can continue implementing guided pathways here on the campus. Not saying it's the only way, but it's one way that we can do it. They give students room to explore and choose programs of study because a lot of times students come to us and they're not really sure what they want to do. They have an idea, or they're like, oh, I'm not really sure what I want to study, but I know I have interest in A, B, and C. So these centers could help students with that. Provide more coherence and streamline students' path to completion. There's a lot of work already going on here at the college through Title III, which I'll bring up in a minute, which allows our faculty to look at the program mapping and figuring out what courses make sense in order for our students to complete their goals. It supports curriculum restructuring work already in progress, again, like I just said, and it can help us deliver student-centric programming. In other words, we're focusing on the student experience. What are the things that we can do here at the college to help students reach their goal, but also, you know, focus them a bit more on, okay, this is the kind of thing that I want to be able to do? Nice, good. I think that's good, good. These centers could foster faculty collaboration even more so than what already occurs. We can encourage students, we can encourage faculty to work together on projects even more so than they're already doing. To Adam's point from before, this can inform the master plan. It allows us to be more intentional in our use of space. We can make decisions on, okay, this is what we want CBI to look like, this is what would make sense for Hudson Hall. These are, this is what we should do with the classrooms inbound, for example. One example I like to use is CBI. I'm not sure if anyone from the board is familiar with this, but often we have emergency, there are emergency drills, mock drills from our EMT program that are using the hallways in order to have these drills occur, and sometimes they occur right in front of the IT office, who gets a little upset that there is a drill right in front of their office. But where else do the students have to learn, to practice this type of situation? And so, do we need, how can we reconfigure CBI to make it a bit more hospitable for not only those types of operations, but also so that IT can continue their work uninterrupted? We also have some space in CBI that could be reconfigured to make more like a hospital setting. That's currently underused because it was a former CIS lab. It can help the college with budget requests, fundraising, and approaching potential donors. So in other words, it gives the college something to focus on. We can say, okay, here is a collection of programs that you, as a donor, can help us support, but it's taking to them what we need as opposed to accepting from them, well, okay, this is what we think you should do. We can say to them, this is what we're working on here at the college, and this is how we think that you can best support us. It can also help refresh current partnerships and establish new ones. Right now, we're working on, we're refreshing our partnerships with our K-12 partners, Poughkeepsie School District, Duchess Boses, for example. We're also having conversations with the New, with NuVance Health System, Westchester Medical Center system. And so it allows us, again, to focus ourselves as to what are we doing as a college? And if we don't distinguish ourselves from other institutions, what is going to set us apart? Because having the lowest tuition is not going to cut it anymore. Okay? We have a great liberal, we have great liberal arts education, but that's not necessarily going to cut it anymore. What are the things that are going to set us apart from other institutions so students choose to come to DCC? So work that the campus has already done. This, this next couple of slides are results from a workshop that was done in May '22. As folks know, I'm celebrating one year, so this is before I got here, but this was work that folks did on guided pathways as far as collecting, rearranging, organizing our academic programs into clusters. And so this first cluster, for example, we, the campus decided to put them into eight clusters, arts, computer science, liberal arts, or explore, law and order, education, business, engineering and technology, and health. It was an exercise that allowed the campus to think about, okay, these are the programs that exist, and these are how they go together. Couple more examples. I'm a fan of, I like the concept of the schools. And also, I like number five here because of the one at the bottom. I don't know what I want to do because a lot of our students show up that way, right? They're not really sure what they want to do. And also, here at the college, are, we have a lot of students in our LAX, LAH, and GSP programs. I call our GSP, like it's like our conglomerate of students, it's this large glob or mob of students where it's like, okay, what's the goal? What are they actually here for? We have a lot of students that are in that program who are the wannabe nurses, right? We don't have that many slots in our nursing program. So those students that are sitting in that GSP program, they're hoping to get into our nursing program, but it's a very, it's tight competition. So what are we doing to support those students who don't necessarily meet the requirements to get into our nursing program? What else are we doing to help them meet alternative goals than just trying to go into nursing? We're also currently working on our Title III grant. The number of areas that we're focusing on, like onboarding, new student orientation, program mapping, and pathways is one that's really important for me because I think it's important that faculty step back and take a look at programs and say, okay, well, do the programs as they currently sit make sense? Are we best meeting the needs of our students? Other areas there as far as Title III is concerned, it's a wide-ranging grant, and I think that also connects really well to this concept of centers. So where are we right now? We have, we have proposed six Centers of Excellence. So aviation education, behavioral sciences and public service, humanities and the arts, industry and innovation, nursing and allied health, and STEM. Again, this is still in its conceptual phase, it's a work-in-progress. This may be something that changes. I think we were talking about the centers, I think it was held a few weeks ago, where we decided, oh, wait, should there only be five centers? You know, that's, again, this is a work-in-progress. We're still trying to figure out what makes the best sense for the college. We may decide that only two or three centers make sense, and we're focusing on those. Next steps, we're brainstorming on the concept, and we'll still continue the Title III work. Those things are run in parallel. And timeline of implementation, it's anticipated that the earliest change would be fall 2025. Again, there's a lot of work that would have to come into play if we're going to make this happen. Again, even if we walked out tonight and said, hey, we're going to do this, we're really excited, we still have a lot of work that we would have to do in order to make this, really flesh out this concept. And another thing that we have to consider is, do we phase this in, or do we rip off the Band-Aid? In other words, do we just phase in one particular center or two centers at a time, or do we create all six centers at the same time? I think that is the end, so are there any questions? I know I went kind of fast.
Any questions? You were comprehensive. Thank you, Ray. Next item on the agenda are liaison reports, first is DCC Foundation. Frank?
The celebration of giving event is this Friday at 5:00 PM at the Grand View. If you have an RSVP, please do so. Steve Caswell has pledged $10,000 for restricted scholarship in memory of his son for a student in construction management, the James Caswell Memorial Scholarship. Cheryl Sheenese has pledged $17,250 to endow a scholarship in memory of her daughter for a student in human services, Melanie Sheenese Memorial Scholarship. The Greenspan Trust made a gift of $50,000 to support the expansion of the daycare center, and this is an increase, to increase the daycare scholarship fund. And the gala is April the 6th at the Grand View. Hopefully, you have received your invitations, I know I did. And Central Hudson also announced at the Chambers Contact Breakfast, a partnership supporting the expansion of the mechatronics and HVAC programs and scholarship support for students with a $250,000 tentative gift.
Any questions for? I just wanted to say that was actually, it was a fun contact breakfast, although the DCC group was sort of in the very front row. We couldn't text or anything else, like everybody else was doing at times. But the, it was actually kind of very laudatory at the end, this partnership that Chris, the CEO of Central Hudson, described with us. So it got a big round of applause. In other words, this is always good for our advertising and attention and marketing, so to speak, to have that. So thank you. That brings me to the last item on the workshop agenda, which is the DCC Association. And we met yesterday. So of note, the directors approved a 4% increase for all three meal plans. Room rates were also raised by 4% for double and triple rooms, but single rate, room rates were raised by 8% because this is considered kind of a luxury to be by yourself in these big rooms. We also approved expanding the daycare hours by 30 minutes each day, so it will close operations at 5:30 PM henceforth rather than at 5:00 PM. And yes, funds to pay the staff for the extra time work were generously supplied by the DCC Foundation. Thank you, Diana. There are more students in our residence hall this spring than budgeted, as well as more than last spring. I think we're at about a 73% occupancy right now, but that includes some CIA students, and the contract with the CIA ends just before March when it goes month to month to month. We also added a new instructor to our daycare center, but one also resigned, so it wound up being kind of a wash. We remain unable to accept more children because of the staffing issue. Food operations are looking good and profitable right now because they've increased their hours of service, including on weekends, and there's been more catering requests. Finally, we're in the process of renewing the bond for our dormitory. The interest, renewing it, the interest rate on it right now is 7.2%, where we were only paying 4% last year. Yes. The banker over there knows. So this is not favorable to us to keep paying these extra interest charges, so we're hoping that now that the Fed hasn't raised, it may lower, that that will prove favorable to us. As part of the renewal, we're also required to assemble an advisory committee, which will include residents who are knowledgeable about financing options, marketing, et cetera. We have to do this before February 15th, and we have to come up with a game plan to somehow figure out how we're going to make it not so expensive to operate and run the dormitory, but by June, it has to be acceptable to the lender, if I said that correctly. Vice President Rathbun can correct me if I said anything wrong. And that concludes my report as well. Any questions? Okay, we can go directly over to start the regular meeting. I'll call this to order at 7:08, I think it is, 7:07? I'll call this to order at 7:08, I think it is, 7:07? Thank you. And Ms. Flesley, would you like to lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joy, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank Stella.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Caswell.
Present.
Ms. Maya Chincon.
Here.
Ms. Darah Cloud.
Here.
Mr. Michael Dupree.
Present.
Ms. Angela Flesley.
Present.
Ms. Lisa Gardi.
Present.
Mr. Abis Guzman.
Present.
Ms. Evelyn Panichi.
Present.
Ms. Linda Pratt.
Present.
Quaram.
Present.
Full house tonight, thank you. Make it a motion to approve the agenda as so moved. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Any nays or abstentions? I believe there's no public comment tonight because we have no agenda items. Thank you. Next item would be a consideration of the minutes for the meeting held on December 5th, 2023. Do everyone have a chance to read them? Motion to approve. Thank you, Frank. Is there a second? Thank you, Abis. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate, say aye. Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries as well, thank you. Next item on the agenda, committee reports. We start with Chair Gardi for Academic and Student Affairs.
So we, at our, thank you. At our most recent committee meeting, we had a presentation about, by Dr. Houston about the Centers for Excellence and how this can benefit the college and that this is a work in progress. We are brainstorming, working towards it, but really great body of work and going to put the college on a pathway for success, not only for the college as a whole, but for all the students that come through our doors. So very excited to keep our eyes on, on that work. Enrollment, Scott provided us a committee, the committee with an update on full enrollment numbers, and they all look really promising, which is good. And also, we had a discussion about our Middle States work. Dr. Rogers and Susan and Scott are going to come up and talk about that work. We are pleased, and we had spoken about this before, that Middle States did reaffirm our accreditation. However, due to new accreditation standards, which went into effect last year, just our luck, we have been asked to provide a supplemental report, but we were reassured that we should not be concerned about this report. It is rather pro forma, and we are more than prepared to submit it now, although it's not due until September of this year. So I am going to turn the floor over to Susan and Scott to come and talk more about that.
All right. So as trustee Gardi said, we have been fully reaccredited in the November 16th action of the Middle States Commission on Higher Education through the 2030-31 academic year, and that is an amazing accomplishment for institution. And it took a lot of people, it took a lot of effort, it took everybody in this room. Well, maybe not Russ. But so we're very proud of this. We were surprised when the action was originally communicated to us, that we were asked to submit a very minor, but still a supplemental report, which is due September 5th. We were asked to follow up on three particular items. The entire report is capped at 10 pages. This is not, this is not a monitoring report, we are not on warning. And as trustee Gardi mentioned, this is very much related to the brand new standards that were adopted by the commission on July 1st, far after our visit, our self-study, and all the work that we did. So the three items that we do need to put together as a report in these 10 pages, you have them, but I will just summarize. So we're asking, we're being asked to provide documentation on financial resources and financial planning. This includes both for our institution and for related entities such as the association or the foundation. I'll speak in a moment about a follow-up call that we did with our Middle States liaison, Dr. Terrence Peavey, and about how he clarified that. The second item is about the SAM, the Enrollment Management Plan, to make sure that it is fully aligned with our strategic plan, which also makes sense because we were kind of just approving all the basic elements of the strategic plan right before the visiting team got here. So a follow-up on that is pretty reasonable. The third item is about showing that we have a plan and progress in place to make sure that we're doing good assessment on our administrative units, which that was, I think, you know, a very clearly acknowledged area of, of challenge for us in our Middle States report. So that one wasn't a surprise at all. And as I said, Middle States defines these different actions and reports differently. The action is actually the reaccreditation, the fully reaccredited. That is the action. This type of report, supplemental report, is typically used just for this kind of follow-up. That said, we did, Scott and Michael Hall as co-chairs of the Middle States Initiative here on campus, we did a follow-up call on December 14th with our Middle States liaison, Dr. Peavey. He started this call by saying, the supplemental report references the 14th edition of the new Middle States standards. DCC went through the self-study under the 13th edition, but any follow-up that happened after July 1st, we are now asking institutions to follow the 14th. He says this absolutely refers to the brand new evidence expectations for the standards document that Middle States has now published, and that we should not feel concerned about this request. Having reviewed the actions taken at the November 16th meeting for other institutions, we saw many, many supplemental reports and sometimes things that were much worse than that. So we, we feel like we're in pretty good shape. I do want everyone in this room, and we've been sharing this across campus as well, at Convicon and in email communications, don't be surprised if we submit the supplemental report and we're asked for, you know, another one as a follow-up, but we again hope and expect that that would be a relatively minor thing for us to complete. The, well, I'll pause. Other questions on any of this so far?
I have a quick one. Wasn't there also like an interim report that was cut out as part of the 14th, or the new standards?
Good memory, Michael, yes.
Midpoint peer review was something they used to do, and now we don't have to do that at all. So they are doing many more things on a yearly basis.
I was going to say, that's why I think part of this occurred because you're not going to, they're not going to get this interim thing, so they wanted to have a little bit more information as they go along, so.
Absolutely.
And we submitted data to them every year, and right now, they created algorithms where if we submit something that shows a drop in finances, a drop in enrollment, it will automatically trigger a supplemental report. So we didn't trigger any that way, but we made it this way.
Thank you.
So the only other thing we wanted to take a moment to address is on January 10th, as I'm sure you are all aware, there was an article published in the Times Union Newspaper that really erroneously lumped us in with some of the other SUNY community colleges who were in dire straits. So there was, you know, a large portion of that article in the Times Union was dedicated to talking about these, these other schools that are having significant financial issues. You may have heard Clinton Community College is, is abandoning their campus and moving. So, and then there was a paragraph down, further down in the report that said, and these other institutions are also under scrutiny from Middle States. And we were listed there because of this supplemental report. So we immediately contacted them, we asked for a retraction, the editor doubled down. He did include in the morning edition a statement from Duchess Community College. We've been in touch with SUNY, asking if, you know, for their support in correcting this record because it's, it's really an incorrect impression that was given about the health of our institution. And we also spoke with Dr. Peavey at Middle States. I actually just heard back from our contact at SUNY at about 5:30 this evening, and she says that Middle States is planning to put out a statement correcting the record. And I, I asked if there were any additional actions that were being taken, but that, that seems to be probably what will, what will take place.
That's really good.
Yeah, we're, we're hopeful that we would get the support on that.
I'm going to add in real quickly that we had the New York Community College Trustees Association meeting last week, Stephen and I were both there. He came out a little bit late. The first, the first topic of conversation before it was really open was that all the trustees were complaining about the erroneous article. And the comment was, one of the guys said, well, we're going to talk to the publisher next week. And I was like, so I put in the chat, I couldn't help myself. Duchess immediately called the editor, and there was a revision put forth the next morning that clarified. Everyone was doing this afterwards for Duchess, for your actions on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Great. I think that concludes our report, if there are no further questions.
Great work, trustee Gardi. Great work, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is board policy. Chair Guzman. Oh, you have more? Go ahead.
I finish?
I didn't see all the chair. I apologize, Lisa.
We also talked about the nursing program and the great work that's been done with our program. I don't have the exact percentage, but we had a high rate of success with our first-time takers. I don't know what the number is, 93 or 95? Is 90? That, which is amazing, so kudos there. Also discussed the December letter from Governor Hokel regarding campus speech. And within the letter, she made it, this was sent out to all college presidents and offered her support for free speech, and makes clear that any form of harassment on college campuses will not be tolerated. Dr. Rogers talked about Convicon and explained how great it was, and all of the, talked about the work that's happening at DCC. And also, Joy had talked about the board retreat, which is coming up in February. So we, we don't have a speaker yet, but it's coming up soon. Oh, do we have?
We have a facilitator.
A facilitator. We do have somebody ready to, okay. So we have a facilitator identified, but the board will have its second retreat this February. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
I stand chastised. You wouldn't have any additional questions for Chair Gardi? Okay, I'm going back in my corner now. Chair Guzman, board policy.
Board Policy Committee, we met January 10th. Some items for consideration and approval. There were two policies that were provided to the committee for review. They were consensual slash amorous relations in the workplace, and also the whistleblower policy. The committee requested that these policies be looked at by the president's executive leadership team, P E L T, before being brought forward for reaffirmation. We are projecting that they will be brought, hopefully, to our next month's agenda for the board meeting. That was about it. We did discuss Convicon a little bit, and the board retreat, hopefully towards the end of February.
Any questions for Abis? Then just, also our first meeting of the year, I want to congratulate trustee Guzman, who is now the deputy comptroller, Duchess County Comptroller. Next item on the agenda is Finance and Facilities Report, Chair Caswell.
All right, thank you. So our committee met on January 8th and talked about a number of things. First was the campus redevelopment and capital budget requests. We had some insights through that at our workshop, but we took the time to go through each item in detail, and Adam took us through that, so that was great. We also got taken through the financial report also that you saw at the workshop. And if I could just throw in an editorial comment related to everything you heard earlier, we are in strong financial shape here. We have a fund balance that exists to protect us from any downfalls or any things that come along. You know, I think the team's in a great position to, to address anything that comes forward. So I just want to reassure everybody that from the committee's point of view, we also think we're in good shape. We went through the whole, the upcoming budget process, you know, advocacy efforts that are underway to try to obtain more funding. Adam walked us through the process and timelines and the deadlines and all the approval dates for the upcoming year, so we're, we're prepared in advance. And we talked about the changes in the way we're approaching things, the big thing. And, you know, I thank everyone for working with, listening to the county. You know, the legislature, as was mentioned, had some concerns. They just, they just see a lump sum, so breaking out the design versus the construction and coming forward in two different requests, I think will go a long ways in, in getting the support from the legislature. It's a way that they're commonly looking at things in their bond requests and things, so I, I think it'll, it'll help us going forward, so thank you on that one. We also had two county agreements that are impacting DCC that I just wanted to mention real quick. Regarding the aviation, Dr. Jordan spoke to the committee about the flight program at the Hudson Valley Regional Airport and some of the concerns that need addressing to further enhance the program. And the county signed a lease agreement with Sky Harbor, who will now occupy a hangar at the airport to house jets. The college has been in touch with Sky Harbor regarding some line level positions that could, you know, possibly be available for DCC students in the future. So those are the major items that we discussed this month.
Any questions for Stephen? I just have a comment. I think it really is smart of us to make sure that we align with the way the county's looking at this in terms of capital costs. I hadn't realized you guys separated out design fees until you started explaining it, and it just makes more sense.
Yeah, I mean, you can go with either approach, but the county changed many years ago because of cost overruns and things. They, you know, they decided to split it up. So when you get to the construction phase, you have the design phase that really zeros in, and it, not that you won't have overruns, but, you know, at least it gives you a much, much firmer, you know, grasp on the numbers.
Agreed, so thank you. Last committee report is Personnel and Community Relations, Chair Flesley.
Thank you. We discussed personnel matters as always. There are no resolutions coming before the board tonight, as you've noticed. Michael and I were discussing, this is the first time that either one of us can remember where there are no resolutions coming before the entire board. We also received some legal updates on pending litigation, and then discussed all of the things that Lisa, as the person who read her report first, discussed, so I will not be duplicative.
Any questions for Angela? Thank you. The next item is Report of Student Trustee, Maya?
Hi. So I just want to say that I'm very excited for the spring semester. There is quite a few events that are happening throughout the next couple of weeks. So this upcoming Thursday, there is going to be like a persona cards where you can like make your own like greeting card, and someone will like draw them out for you. They had that last semester. They have some pretty funny like sayings, I think. That's going to be held in the Greenspan cafeteria between 12 and 2:00. And then it's also going to go from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Conklin atrium. Next Tuesday, they're going to have the VR racing simulator from 11:00 to 3:00. Then that Thursday, there will be a club fair from 12:30 to 2:00. I think it is a good way for students to be a part of a club or like just get out there for the extracurriculars. And then over the past winter break, there was a couple of things that have occurred. So one being that the NYCCT had a advocacy meeting with all the community college trustees, and they were just discussing about the advocacy funding, and Andres Pazmino and a couple other trustees, one from Hudson Valley Community College, and I forgot where the other person went, I think it was Clinton Corners, about, just giving more information about the Washington Legislative Summit that will be occurred the first week of February. I'm happy to say that I will be going to that, so that's exciting. And then the last couple of things I have is that over the past winter break, students brought to my attention that those who are like homeless or don't have homes to go to, don't have access to food on campus, so especially those that don't have vehicles, they have no way of providing food for themselves. And then those who just live far from home, even if they don't have a car, still stuck on campus, and they're, they were telling me how lonely it can be and that they're not allowed to have visitors. They would, just thought it would be nice that I would bring it up. And then the other thing was another aviation issue. So apparently, smaller aircrafts were replaced with all bigger ones. I do think that is really nice to see that the program is bringing like bigger aircrafts to the program. However, when like starting out flying, I think you have to be a certain However, when like starting out flying, I think you have to be a certain weight to fly the plane, and some students may not qualify for that weight requirement. So the bigger the aircraft is, the weight of the student might kind of affect the turbulence or however it goes. That's everything, though.
Thank you, Maya. I just wanted to say, I didn't put it in my report for, about the association, but we did increase the reimbursement officially now for when you, for travel, et cetera, for SGA representatives. So because you brought that up, that was one of our, last time, it's one of the things I wanted to make sure, you know, we followed up on, and Peter's taking notes on the aviation issue right now, too.
Okay.
It's always nice to have a student bring up things that we may not hear. And I, for one, by the way, just want to point out that the Legislative Summit would not just be Maya, but also President Jordan and trustee Caswell and, da-da-da-da-da-da, trustee Gardi. So we have four representatives going. I'm really excited about this. I can tell you that the more I've gone out to events where I'm representing Dutchess, the better it is because we have a place at the table and they all want to know what we're doing. So it's good to share. Are there any other questions, Maya? Next item on the agenda is my report. I'll try to hurry. The Division of Institutional Effectiveness coordinated a very successful Convocan event. As you may have heard, we had, I was there in the morning, overlapped with Steve, who was there for most of the afternoon, overlapped with Linda, who came later in the afternoon, so we had trustees present at all times. The highlights include what's called here a rousing team building activity. We played bingo, only it was called Falcon, and somehow they thought they were going to get through three different games of this, and we only made it through one. But it was fun, and more importantly, we were, when you were seated, you were kind of assigned seats, tables, so you wouldn't be sitting with your usual cohort. And I found myself not being assigned to a table, and I started to go right over to Susan and Peter, and I thought, stop, 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 stop. So I went over to a table next door and met someone I'd never met before here. She's worked here for 31 years at the college. I had a smashing time doing it, so I thought it was great. We also had, Raymond was on the spot last time, last year. It's like a little den, we'll call it, with seating, where people could just come in and chat with him, get to know him. So we had our newer employees doing the same thing this past time, and I think it went really well as well. We also had our, various programs represented, but the most popular, I think, was the, I don't, I can never say that. Yes, the Anatomage Machine. You see the anatomy on a machine. It's, well, it's pretty cool to see. It always had consistent crowds around there, so that was fun to see. And last but not least, I flunked one of them, which was Name the Flag, Name Your Flags for Which Country. Some, I may need to go back to school for geography, basically. We also have, one of our big successes right now is the Direct Support Professional Project. If you guys remember this, this is where people who are individuals who are like home healthcare aides for people who need assistance. This is actually sort of professionalizing with their, to a degree, so they can also make higher money and get more respect. So I think that this is probably dated already, but right now we had, I think, a little over 140 new students, but.
162.
162.
And still going.
And still going. Also, aren't we the only one in the state right now doing this?
We're not the only one. We're pretty far ahead of every other school.
So these numbers are what are driving our increases in tuition. So once again, I just want to point out that it's because we're being innovative in offering these new kinds of programs to what we could say non-traditional students that we're able to have more and more success. So at any rate, the first cohort that was launched only had 30, and now you hear above 160, and the cutoff date isn't until Wednesday, I think, of next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's right, tomorrow. Enrollment in student success, DCC has officially joined what is called the Hunter Promise Program. It's collaborating with Hunter College. Hunter College only has an acceptance rate of 46%. There are lots and lots of applicants, obviously, who face denial each year. Under the promise program, these students are encouraged to explore opportunities at one of Hunter's partner schools. We're the sole SUNY partner college and the only partner with on-campus housing. In January, Hunter College will share a list of denied students with DCC. Members from our admissions office are invited to Hunter Promise Days in the spring to meet students and showcase DCC's offering. This is another way to increase, obviously, enrollment, et cetera. It's sort of what we offer with SUNY New Paltz and.
Maris.
Maris, yes, thank you, sorry. In athletics, the men's basketball is currently ranked number one in Region 15 with a record of 11 to 2. The team is ranked number nine, Division III, in JCCAA national rankings. The DCC Esports Call of Duty team competed in the fall 2023 Tier III NJCAA Playoff Championship and finishes runner-ups to Glen Oaks Community College. In spring 2024, the DCC Athletic Department is actively supporting various local high school basketball events. These include the Officials vs. Cancer Tournament, Boys and Girls Championships, and sectional games. And in Finance Administration, in December, IT and the Teaching and Learning Center worked collaboratively to implement the Lucian Experience, which replaces basically Blackboard Portal or MyDCC. This was completed on time and before the Blackboard contract expired. Then, as I said, trustee Caswell and I were attended the NYCCT Zoom meeting, where we learned that community colleges in New York educate 45% of all New York, all SUNY students. That's 100, roughly 175 students. This is one of the topics that will be used in the advocacy with the state, trying to get an increase in what community colleges are paid or donated to from state money rather than just the four-year colleges. And we were also told that New York legislators agreed to want to expand the Tuition Assistance Program. The issue is, is that if community colleges can't expand programs to actually get more students unless we have enough money to create those new programs that are necessary for workforce, et cetera. Last but not least, on January 7th, DCC hosted 350 guests at our Hudson Valley Regional Airport location for the swearing-in ceremony of Sue Serino, Dutchess County's new county executive. Our entire community was proud to serve as the backdrop for this inauguration ceremony. And if you haven't seen the pictures, it's pretty cool. They've got all our big aviation equipment behind her. It was really a great advertisement for us, and Dr. Jordan got to speak, of course, as well. So that concludes my report. Anybody have any questions? Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam, now you can do what you want. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Adam and Raymond to introduce two of those newcomers. Well, one of them not so new to DCC, but new to her role at DCC.
Okay, all right. Now, Russell Tompkins. Russell is our new chief of campus safety and security. Some of you may already know him. He's been a part of the community for a while. He retired from the town of Poughkeepsie, a long tenure there, retired as a lieutenant, spent a year as a school resource officer in the New Milford School District in Connecticut. He, and then most recently, and I believe still currently, is a part-time police officer for the town of Fishkill, where I believe he still plans on filling in every now and then. It's beneficial for two reasons. One, it maintains his credentials, but it also keeps us connected to the community. He has two master's degrees, a bachelor's degree, and most importantly, he has an associate's degree from Dutchess Community College.
And he speaks Spanish.
I didn't know that. Learn something new every day. He also has two daughters, one of which is a senior, and he, she will be talking to Scott very soon to register for. Russell, welcome to the campus.
Anything you want to say, Russ?
No, I'm happy to be here. I'm one of those LEH students, so I guess I'm part of the Glob.
We love the Glob, Russ.
And I went to the Yonkers, which I'm happy to hear about the partnership coming up. And I also want the Maris for an MPA, so, again, a partnership with Maris, so.
Glad you're here.
Welcome. All right, so I'm back. It is my honor to recognize Karen Ingram. Karen is serving as the interim associate dean for Instruction and Learning for the Learning Commons. She is stepping in while Bonnie Gallagher is out on leave. I also will announce Bonnie did have her baby on January 11th. Healthy baby girl. Future Falcon. Karen has been part of DCC for 33 years. She currently is a tenured faculty member in the Allied Health and Biological Sciences Department, and she is our program chair for Medical Lab Technology Program, and she was a longtime department chair. And so Karen, thank you for stepping in to take this role for the next year.
Anything you want to say, Karen?
Well, I'm very excited. A little overwhelmed with my stuff today in the office, and we're working on budget. But I think we'll return tomorrow and we'll. But thank you for the opportunity.
Glad you're here. I'm going to ask Scott to talk about enrollment, give us a spring enrollment update. Make it good, Scott.
As Adam implied earlier, the spring numbers are looking really strong as of this morning, and nearly 3,700 students, bid over 40,000 credits. That's 11% more credits than we had last year, 10 and 1/2% more students than we had last spring at this time. The enrollment has continued to grow at a rate faster than last year, even over the past week. And if you remember, in the fall, things started to slow down because we had been so far ahead. Now the amount we're ahead has been growing. A big piece of that is the Direct Support Professional Program that we talked about earlier. A lot of those students are coming through now. It's a heavy lift getting through quickly, having them to test for English, but we're pushing them through and will continue to do so for the next day or so. So that program alone is about nearly 40% of our headcount increase and 25% of our credit increase. So there are other good things going on, but that program is certainly driving us to a higher, higher point. And that's something that these students can take second and third levels of the credentials in coming years, so they're not just a one-and-done situation. So we can keep bringing in new students at the first level. We'll also have them moving through to the other levels in future years. In terms of new students, we have 11 more than we did last year at this time, which is a 3% increase. If you remember, last year was a large increase for the first time in a long time, so being up in new students again is good. And when I'm saying new here, I'm talking about new matriculants. If we include new non-matriculants and micro-credential students, we have 555, which is a 35% increase over last year. Many of those are the DSP students, but a lot of the DSP students had prior enrollment at Dutchess and may not have been successful here and are coming back. So some of them are new, but some of them are not so new. As you know, we have the wildly important goal of getting our enrollment headcount up to 5,000 students over the next five years as part of our strategic plan. So the good enrollment this fall and spring is really a good first step. We kind of have to do the same step every year to meet it. We still have to increase 20% over where we are now, but we've made a really good start at that, but there's still work to do. In terms of the residence hall, we have about 222 students this spring. It was 238 in the fall. Typically, we drop off maybe 30% between fall and spring. This year, we dropped off less than 10%. Part of that is 20 more new students in the spring than we had last year. The aviation program is fueling part of that for the first time. We admitted for the aviation program in the spring, so that was a good piece of the new student enrollment. But they also did a great job enrolling students, many of whom weren't quite up to snuff academically, but creating academic plans with them so they could remain in the residence hall for the spring. Applications for the spring were up 5%, and were up the same 5% for the fall, which on the surface is encouraging, but I'm a little bit worried about them because I think it's kind of a softer application pool so far. We have several hundred more applications through the SUNY app, which came during the Free Application Week. Most of those students are also applying to SUNY four years that they're very likely to get into. So that, last year, our yield on that was very low, so we still have some work to do in terms of applications as we go through the spring. And we're at a point where maybe 25, 30% of applications are in. Most of ours come in later, but we really want to push that as we move through the next couple of months. And finally, I want to say, we just heard an hour or so ago that we've been chosen by the National Institute of Student Success to have what them come in and assess our programs and how we, how we try to retain students, all the things we do to retain students. This is funded through SUNY on a HECURE grant. We had to apply for it a few weeks ago, and they did choose us, so we'll be doing that starting this spring. It'll be a five- or six-month process, but they'll come in and look at our various processes and procedures with students and make suggestions on what we might do better. Any questions?
So is it, does it come with funding or it's more of a consultation?
It's completely funded by the HECURE Foundation, so we don't have to pay anything.
Congratulations.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, Scott. The only other thing I'll talk about is about advocacy. Last week, Adam and myself spent most of the week running around the county or on Zoom meeting with or New York State legislators. It was a productive time, I would say. I see Adam is nodding. We talked mostly about state funding to close the gap between what community colleges receive in terms of funding from New York State for operations and what the state ops receive, which is, we receive something like 25% of what the state ops receive. So that was, that was the better part of what we spoke about. In addition to expressing our thanks and appreciation to our representatives for their work on behalf of education, not just higher education, but education across the state. So I don't know how that's going to work out, but we're going to continue to pay attention, and they promised to stay in touch if they had questions about anything that they needed to push different efforts. We are also asking them to push for an additional $150,000 for the coming year to help us continue to support those students who are housing insecure and homeless, living in the residence hall. And thanks, Maya, for representing their voices. Appreciate it. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for President Jordan? I do want to add that Peter and I'll be going up Tuesday to Albany, I think it is?
Thirty.
Thirty. This is another port, again, this is about the advocacy that's ongoing with the leaders. And just to point out, the reason why I said that we educate 45% of the students, making sure I said that figure, is we only get 25% of the funding. So there's a gap there, and that's what we're trying to make sure that everybody understands. So does anybody have any items for other business or future agendas? There being none, then the next meeting is February 27th. Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.